Council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of veterans, our servicemen and women, and those who've given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Clerk will call the rule. Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Here.
Crowe. Linehan.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
O'Malley. Sika.
Here.
Semenelli. Winslow.
Winslow here.
And Spatafora. Spatafora here. Under the provision of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Meteorites, will be recording this evening's meeting, so just be aware. There'll be audio and video recording of this meeting. I don't see any other people recording that, and I know that the clerk has given any notice, so there's nobody else. First order of business is on the guest achievement, citizens achievement announcements. We have members of the Malden youth community will appear before the council to speak about the importance of Hispanic Heritage Month and to invite the council to upcoming events. Thank you. Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes.
Yes, thank you so much. First of all, we're waiting on a couple of kids, but hopefully they'll come in. I'll do a little bit of talking, maybe. So what we did was we're inviting in members of the Malden community. I believe they're all from Malden High School, and they're coming in to read the proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. And I would love it. They're very excited to be able to read, which I think is the first proclamation that the council has made, so they're excited about that. Many of them are seniors, so it's a great way to kind of be able to say that and take some pictures. And some of their family members are here as well, and be able to have that under their belt and be super proud of it. A lot of them, we grew up, sort of, our kids, they grew up together, and they represent there's some different countries from where they're coming here, where I'm just kind of checking on to see if they're here yet. But we have Colombia and Puerto Rico in the house right now, and I'm wondering if we could, I wouldn't want them to miss that, so I'm not sure what we can do.
Do you want to, well, we have some people coming in, so let's, yeah, we can table, if you want to table Karen, and then we can, excuse me, Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes, and have the city clerk's office come in and give an update on the, is that fine?
Yeah, so about 10?
I, how long do you think it's, no, I didn't mean table.
Is that okay?
I'm sorry, I'm using council language. 15 minutes, good?
Yeah, okay.
15 minutes, good? Okay.
Thank you so, thank you for doing that.
No problem. So let's go to the next order of business. I'll read it, clerk, you can go down. I did, I banged the gavel and started, okay. Representatives of the city clerk's office will appear before the council to provide an overview of September 6th primary and any changes being discussed for the November 8th general election. This is on Counselor Barbara Murphy, so let me turn her mic on. I'm acting as the clerk right now, so I wanted to read the paper. Counselor Barbara Murphy, where is your name, I'm losing it.
My name is Laura.
Yeah, hold on, there we go. There you go, Counsel Murphy, there we go.
Thank you very much. Yes, I thought after the primary election that it would be very beneficial to have the city clerk, the assistant city clerk, come in and speak to us about the primary election. We had so many new things going on, from new voting machines to the increase in precincts, to hiring, you know, a number of new people who had to be trained, to the multilingual aspect of it. And I thought, you know, it would be great to get an update from them today to give us time to help them with any impediments they might have incurred during that process, so that the November election, which obviously will have a much higher turnout, will run smoothly. So we want to make sure they have the resources that they need to make sure that this all works smoothly for us. So, simple as that. That's why they're here.
All right, maybe I can start off. Is the microphone better down here or is it up here? You can hear already, right?
Yes.
We give it down here. So, you know, we try to, every opportunity we get, we like to promote elections, tell people, you know, get information out there, so it's less confusing that day. The September primary was unique because it went to the 27 precincts, up from 16. Can't stress how much more effort it takes and more, as challenging it is. The 11 additional precincts, you know, only 18% of the people turned out to vote without preparation. Doesn't matter if it's 18% or 50%, it's the same preparation. So the 11 additional precincts, just from a standpoint, logistically, getting all the setups for all the poll workers, the extra poll workers, get them going, you know, it's more challenging, but we did it. And during the course of the day, we, you know, ran into things that we now are aware of, that we will be correcting in November. You know, we realize in Ward 3 at the BB, you know, to cram four precincts in that school, and anyone that's been in BB, it's not like the other schools where the, you know, stairway's right in front of you. You know, most other schools, they're built differently, the stairways around the side. You know, now there's four precincts, which them and the ferryway are the only ones with four precincts. So logistically, it was kind of tough. We had voting up on the third floor, which is the gym, the second floor and the cafeteria. So I actually have an appointment with the principal of BB tomorrow at 9:30, then I'm going to the school, and we're gonna take a peek at maybe going back to using those two bottom floors, rooms, and then we'll still need to do something, but we're hoping not to use the third floor, just from, you know, just from a standpoint of people getting up to vote. But, you know, there's other things we can do at BB. I know the police did a lot of the traffic and the votings, the people when they came to vote. You know, we can always put a poll worker there that day, you know, shuffle some of the traffic to where they should be. You know, the ferryway, we had three precincts in one location, in one isolated precinct. We're gonna look to move all four together the next election. Early learning center, maybe the signage wasn't where it was properly, it's kind of, because they enter in the back, and one of the signs was the front, so it was kind of confusing, so we're gonna make sure that's corrected. So we did learn. I mean, the thing is, you know, like I say, 11 different precincts, there was only one additional polling place, so, you know, the thing is, you cram more precincts into voting locations, and, you know, there's not a whole lot more people, but it just, you know, you need separate, you know, the separate polling locations. So, you know, we noticed that, and, you know, there's a few other things I will say on a good note. I think the bilingual aspect of it, we really did a lot of outreach for bilingual poll workers this time. We had 17 bilingual poll workers or interpreters. 14 of them spoke Cantonese, Mandarin, or a combination of both, which is something that, you know, there's more than we've ever really had. So, I mean, we've made great strides in that. You know, the training with the poll works, I'm gonna turn it over to Carol Anne in a second. You know, she can go over the training on the poll workers and all the outreach that we did, the different papers. Because we did get people on election day, say, hey, I didn't know my precinct had changed and my voting location has changed. But, you know, the thing is, this has been discussed for about a year, and there was all sorts of outreach and things going on where, you know, if you come to the day of election and your precinct changed, I would have thought at some point, you know, you would have heard something somewhere, but, you know, I guess some people didn't do. But, you know, the other thing, a lot of people, if they did get changed, they may have not been happy with the change, but, you know, the reality is, when we did the redistricting, you're voting, you do it by blocks, so unfortunately, when the block stops, there's a chance you're not voting at 89 Pearl Street, you might be at the Irish American. You know, that's just the way it is, and that, you know, that's something we've, you know, I always go back to my situation in '52. You know, 10 years ago, I'm still steaming that we got changed to Melrose Rep District, but eventually you gotta move on from it. And so these, on the city level, is only minor changes, but, you know, you get someone that's used to voting at a certain location, and they have to vote in other locations, I guess it upsets them, but I'm sure a couple times they'll, voting and they'll get used to the new place, too. And I can turn it over to Carol Anne, but the last thing maybe I could plug is the mail-in ballots. If people have any, you know, November's different than September, you could get inclement weather, you don't know what's gonna happen. Take advantage of the mail-in ballots. I mean, the state's gonna be sending out, those of people that aren't signed up for the November 8th election already, they're sending out applications, probably gonna be in the mail this weekend, or by the weekend, and take advantage of it. You know, we got the drop-off boxes out front, got tremendous response of people that use that. You know, it gets emptied twice a day, at least, you know, towards the end, it gets even addressed, you know, emptied more, so, you know, so I'm gonna turn it over to Carol Anne, and then we'll take any questions we have. But thanks for the opportunity to share some of this stuff with anyone that's watching and yourselves.
Thank you, and thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate the invitation. Counsel Murphy, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I don't have to tell you that the advertising with the new polling precincts began in 2020, 2021, when this body actually started doing the redistricting meetings. Everything was posted, we had two public hearings, if I recall correctly, not mandated by law, but to Counsel O'Malley's credit, he thought it was really important to give the public a chance to come out and understand and ask questions and see what's happening with the redistricting, and they did. So we got a lot of feedback that way. That was where the advertising for this change in our city began. Since then, we did a census mailing to everybody in the, every household in the city of Malden. They got tear-off portions. If you all answered your census form, you'd know that you got a tear-off portion, you could hang it on your fridge, and it told you exactly where, why your polling location was changing, where your new location was located, the ward and precincts, sub precinct as the case may be, and where your new polling location was. So unfortunately, I will say, although we tried with that, we thought that was a really good idea, we got a lot of census forms back where those little things were still kind of attached to the bottom of the form. So I'm not gonna give up on the mailing, but I just ask people to read their mail carefully when that happens. In addition to that, all of this stuff with the new polling places in the redistricting and in the new locations was also posted, city of Malden website, Secretary of State's website, with help from the mayor's office, Ron Cochran. We did a text email blast to the city. We did reverse 3-1-1 phone calls. We did, we sent it out to all the newspapers. The Advocate actually ran it for us two weeks in a row, which I think had a lot to do with you, Counsel Winslow, because you wanted clarification on the formatting of the, never mind the reason, point is, it was out there, and we were glad to have it out there. So we advertised in all those ways. Obviously, the education never ends, because even when the current residents of Malden know where they go to vote, we have constant people moving into the city all the time. So our work doesn't end now. We will continue to tweak and perfect everything that we did for September, moving into November as that goes. Lot of big push for new poll workers. Counsel Murphy, you mentioned how much new stuff we had going on. This was a huge year of transition for us. In addition to our polling places being different, we had new voting machine, all new voting machines. We had new translation technology that rolled out called Pocket Talk, which is an interpretation device for those, all precincts got them, specifically as a backup to those precincts that didn't have bilingual poll workers that could help them talk that day. So we had that new technology, we had a lot of new poll workers, we did a big push to get new, our goal was to get at least 66 new poll workers. We came close, we didn't meet that goal, but we're not giving up. We actually still have applications coming in. So there was a big transition. I think we did pretty well, considering all the new things that we were juggling, we kept the balls in the air. In regards to the poll workers, we did three trainings alone, just on the new voting machines and how they work. Then we did another training, in person and by Zoom, on how to use the Pocket Talk machines. And then I did six consecutive days of face-to-face in-house training here in City Hall during the open, the early voting week. So we had a lot of trainings, a lot of time, brand-new handbooks, all that kind of stuff. So, big push, we're continuing, because we never seem to have enough poll workers. One way that we actually did reach out, we're gonna continue doing this, is with every new voter registration acknowledgement letter that we send out in the mail, we were adding a Help Wanted, we made like a new Help Wanted page, we spruced it up, we gave it one of those little CV Q codes, those little scan.
QR code.
I'll ask a teenager what they're called, you guys don't know what I'm talking about, I don't know what I'm talking about. But we made it new and sprucy, and we added one of those in every new voter registration that we got. So everybody who moved into the city of Malden from like July to now, got one of those in their acknowledgement letter, just to let people know that you're new, you're registered, come on out and see what else you can do to help kind of be active in your community. We were happy with that, and we got some feedback with that as well. So all those things, I think we covered all of those things that were our biggest areas of opportunity for September. Now we can hit the pavement straight into November and just onward and upward, and perfect what we've done so far. I don't know if there's any questions?
There are some lights. Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. I mostly just wanted to thank you both, Greg and Carol Anne, because I know I was on the phone with you at like 7:45 that morning with some of the issues at BB. You're so responsive, I know that it was a known issue, you worked really hard to take care of it that day, and then immediately the next morning, just, you know, right away, the follow-up of like, this is what we found, this is what we're gonna try to do better. I think when you tell residents that you're aware of stuff and that you're working on it that fast, it goes a long way. People don't feel like it's just being swept under the rug, or that, you know, it was good enough, so I just wanted to give those kind of public kudos for that, because it does mean a lot. I think, you know, I got great feedback on the Pocket Talk, great feedback on just the communication in general. I'm wondering if we can even do some more, like analog, like signs and sandwich boards? That's probably the thing I get asked about most frequently from residents, is can we just literally hang a banner downtown, or can we put sandwich signs up around the T? Just, you know, it sounds so basic, but, and it seems silly after we've done all this other targeted outreach, but I think it couldn't hurt to do that, just to let folks know elections are coming. If you run the numbers, the registrations are up, like the voter registrations are up, but the turnout just seems to be getting poorer and poorer. So anything that we can do to support helping that and turn that in the other direction, I think is gonna be really important. I mean, better turnout helps everybody, we want to have everybody participating and understanding the importance of the elections.
To your point about the registrations, I saw a number today, I was kind of startled by it. I didn't know we were that high, we're at the 36,600 registered voters in Malden. Wasn't that long ago, there was 30,000 registered voters, so that's the other thing. So the more voters you're getting to register now, so the turnout was 6,600. You know, of course, the numbers, that's why the 18%, you say, ah, but then you look at it and you say, all the people that have been registering to vote certainly reflects in, you know, the low percentages where, you know, if you had that many people five or six years ago, it might have been 24%. But you can't really do that, but I was astonished to see that number, how high we are up on registered voters.
Yeah, and we definitely will bring out our electronic advertisement signs for the, I think we've got two of them, and Ron Cochran helps us circulate them around the city, especially at the MBTA when elections are coming up. Unfortunately for September, we were competing with the MBTA shutdown, and so they kind of superseded the importance of the signs to let them know that there were free shuttle buses, getting them on the orange line, but we will bring those back in November.
Counsel Linehan, Counsel Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna echo my fellow counselor. I just want to say that, you know, I'm up in your office a lot, I was up there a lot during Election Day, we were, me and a few friends of mine, we were out there trying to get people to the polls because of the change. We had a lot of phone calls, called your office, and I just want to say that being in your office and the promptness on the phone calls and the return calls was great. And being inside your office and just watching, and I know that, I don't think a lot of people know that you relatively have a new staff up there. I mean, I think it's like under a year, all of them. And, you know, the professionalism and the way they, you know, handle the constituents coming in with questions and taking care of regular, everyday business at the same time. I don't think people realize the amount of work that goes into the election six months prior, on top of dealing with all of us and all the citizens out there that are coming in to get information. So, I mean, you know, I couldn't ask for anything better this election. We do have a couple of problems in my neighborhood, and we have talked about that, and we're gonna work on those things moving forward. But I just want to say that, you know, the professionalism is not, people don't get to see it every day, but, but I do. And now that I got another job, maybe I won't be coming up as much, but, you know, you know, but it's a pleasure to go in your office, it really is. You know, you've got a great staff, and that comes from the top, from the both of you to pass that down to the workers in that office. So I salute you. Thanks.
Thank you for that. I would, if I could just comment to that, Counsel Semenelli, thank you so much for saying that. You should know that the most senior person outside of myself and Greg in our office is nine months. The second one, eight months. The other two, most recent, have been with us for about three weeks.
Wow.
So talk about hit the ground running and baptism by fire, they did an outstanding job. We could not be asking for more from them or by them, and they're just a treat to work with every day, so thank you for bringing them up.
Good work. Thank you.
Counsel Semenelli, Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, thank you again for this kind of post-mortem, and it sounds like it went rather well, I think. I know Ward 4 is really happy with the new precincts. I think that having most of the neighborhood around Tremont Street vote now back at the early learning center is really helpful. It's a short walking distance compared to walking all the way over here to the downtown. So I think it's worked great for Ward 4. The banners, you know, we've, we've been talking about it for a few years, and I would love to make it happen. I don't know if maybe we could put in like a joint paper among us about funding that. It shouldn't be very expensive, banners are cheap, and the metal light poles that you probably would just put up don't need to be electrified, just need poles put into the ground, and I'm sure we can get that in some really crucial areas. We do have the flashing signs, but I'll just be honest with you, every time I drive down Melrose Square, like just look up and you can tell what's going on, and it's super, super effective, and pretty short money, so if any counselors here would like to co-sponsor a financial bill to send up to Gary and ask him to send it down, I would definitely contribute my mitigation funds if need be. Maybe we can even use ARPA funds, but great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Murphy.
Just quick, as we were talking about electronic signs, I'm gonna check with Mr. Hogan to see if there is a possibility of saying, you know, vote November, whatever date it is, 6th or on, 8th, November 8th, on the speed signs that are all throughout the city. You know how like it can say "too fast," "thank you," I wonder if those can be reprogrammed to flash "vote."
If there's anyone that can figure it out, I'm sure Ron Hogan can figure it out.
I'm not sure if they can, but I know the first ones I bought, you could do that. I'm not sure about this particular group that we have now, but that would be an interesting way to just constantly have the message that week, kind of flashing throughout the city.
To incentivize people to slow down so they can read what it's actually flashing at.
Right. So just a thought. But once again, thank you, I'm just happy to have you folks in here. I guess parting, is there, is there anything we can do for you to help you have November, I don't want to say be more successful, but, you know, continue to be successful?
I think, I think after September, whatever issues, not to say more issues can arise, but I think it, what we saw in September, we certainly can internally make better. We don't want people to think that we make voting more difficult, you know, I mean, that's the last thing we're trying to do. We're trying to get people to vote, not, you know, make them not want to vote. So we have some work cut out for us, but like I say, we're pretty confident we can get it done. In November, it will be a lot better than September.
Okay, perfect, thank you. But don't hesitate to reach out to us if you need something, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing all the lights, thank you. So I think I get to skip ahead. So Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes, if you want to start over again?
Sure. Thank you so much, and I would like to start off by introducing some, we have some high school, I think they're all actually, yep, from Malden High School, and they're here to read the proclamation. I know that usually it's read by the council president, but I talked to him earlier, and they would really love to be able to be the first people to read this proclamation by the city council on claiming Hispanic Heritage Month. And we talked a lot about, we're all from different areas, and so I want you to like listen to the proclamation. It's short, but it tells a little bit about what it means, and it's all about unity, this year's theme for 2020 is about coming together. And there are a lot of different, like, terms that we all call each other, we talked about that, there's Hispanic, there's Latino, there's Latinx, there's just so many different words, but we're all just one, we're, you know, from different countries, but we're one people, and we're here in the, you know, United States and making really great progress, both, you know, economically and with culture. So I'm really proud to have a good representation of different countries here come up, and they're just going to come on up and read the proclamation, and I would love to get a picture. Many of them are seniors, so some of them are not, I know you guys aren't, but they're , this is a great thing, they were very excited to be able to do this before they left, and they're college-bound. So thank you so much.
If you want to, if you want to state your names, it's great for the record, too, but if you just want to say your name, so you can tell your friends at home you spoke with the council, that's fine, too, so go ahead.
My name is Denise Toro Beltran.
I'm Noelle Hayes.
My name is Sophia Diaz.
I'm Gianna Diaz.
Joshua Gonzalez.
Okay, so whenever you're ready, yep, go right ahead, thank you.
People call us Hispanics, Latinos, Latinas, Latinx, Latina, Latino millennials, and US Hispanics. These labels have been distracting and confusing, and despite having been created by the census other group and other groups, these were imposed on us. They often stir up passionate opinions of preference. Personally, I use the terms interchangeably, as I grew up with family using Hispanic and Latino or Latina. I respect the elders in my family and how they choose to identify, and will focus here on our commonality. We come in many different skin colors and looks, we are diverse by definition, however, we share a common, a large number of common traits and values. Your proclamation. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began as a commemorative week in 1968 to recognize the contributions of Hispanics, Latinos, and Latinx community during the civil rights movement, and whereas in 1988, it was expanded to a month. Hispanic Heritage Month begins on September 15th, historically significant day that marks the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, and soon after, Mexico on September 16th, Chile on September 18th, and Belize on September 21st. And whereas Hispanic progress is American progress, Latinos are the growth and the economic power of the US, and with more than 62 million people and more than 1.9 trillion million, trillion dollars in purchasing power. And whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, and South America. And whereas Latinos are a large group of hardworking, passionate, and full of value individuals who have contributed and continue to contribute to American society and in our city of Malden, culture, economy, and overall progress. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council hereby recognize in Malden and celebrate September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month.
Right, thank you. Well done.
Counsel Hayes, you still have the floor.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. That was, I was filming it, so I will send that to you guys, but it definitely, I welled up a little there, and thank you so much, you did a great job. I'm so proud of all of you, and we'll celebrate, you know, on the outside. I'll take you all out for coming, so thank you so much, and maybe a picture, yep, okay.
All right. Next, oh, do we have, oh, public comment is next. Do we have any public comment, clerk?
No.
Okay, there is no public comment. Next order of business?
Counsel 382-22, be it ordained as section 11.24.010, placement of polls, wires, Be it ordained as section 11.24.010, placement of poles, wires, and telecommunication equipment in along or public ways be amended in the following manner. There is attachment to this.
Yeah, so this is my paper after last week's discussion. I think everybody, I had Lisa share the picture of the triple pole. I know there's, every ward's probably littered with double poles. I actually went in and looked at the state law and as well as our ordinance to what my surprise is actually a fine in our regular ordinance. DPW Director Knox never enforced it. There's some timing issues, but what I did is I actually just beefed up this, I'm referring to ordinance. It gives us better dates, better finding mechanisms, it puts a little control, and certainly, I think, makes the definition of double poles a much better problem for us to tackle. So I appreciate your support referring to ordinance. Go on, Council Winslow's motion to move to ordinance, seconded by?
Council Murphy.
Council Murphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is referred to ordinance. Next order of business?
Paper 383-22, order that the city council empowers the city's legal department to investigate and answer the alleged open meet law complaint filed by Brian Delacy on September 12, 2022 against the Malden City Council and multiple councils.
Any discussion on this? I would need a motion if we want to have the legal department to investigate it like we usually do.
I'd make that motion.
Okay, and Council, any discussion? Okay, Council Crowe's motion to have the legal department investigate and answer the alleged open meet law complaint, seconded by Council Condon. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item, any questions? Okay. Next order of business? Item passed.
Is four different communications. I don't know how you want to handle them. Do one at a time, one at a time?
These are the planning board recommendations?
Yes, it is.
Let's do them all at once. Is that fine? You want to do individually? Oh, yeah. On Council Crowe's motion to receive the communication on file, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Council, okay, make that, let's do a roll call. All those, do a roll call on that, clerk.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
No.
Sika.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Item passes 10 to 1. Council Crowe for the papers.
So. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. So there are four different papers. What I would like to do, just because we do have a lot of things in ordinance, is sort of take some of these up separately. The first one is around principal use, and that was voted by the planning board to disapprove. Their recommendation is to disapprove, I got Michelle's going to be here, but the, and so, and again, when we had these conversations, the example that we, that was most talked about around principal uses, like the old Papagino's location, that's like a strip mall, and so there's multiple principal uses. So the, but then more of the conversation that actually at the planning board had, you know, if they were sort of in the same building, so they had some other recommendations. So this one, I would like to refer this to ordinance, so we can have a conversation together about, you know, the disapproval and sort of some of the recommendations and come up with a recommendation ourselves.
Okay, Council O'Malley? Did your mic on? Yeah, did the light on?
Yeah, I'm just, so I voted against receiving these committee reports because it's not quite clear why the outstanding paper hasn't been heard by the planning board. I don't know if anyone on the council is aware of what's going on, but you know, I think at the very minimum, there should have been some type of communication to the council explaining what's going on. But to be taking these up without the last paper seems premature, and it's kind of against what we were all agreeing to do. I see Council McDonald and Council Linehan have their lights on.
Okay, you done, Council? Okay, so Council McDonald, get your light on first.
If Council Linehan wants to speak first.
No, no.
So I did, I mean, so I had, there are two stages to the concern about this. The first is that we weren't able to discuss some of these other elements in the hearing, though I sort of thought that the reason, the part, you know, we took up the motion to reconsider at the summer meeting, and I thought that they were, I thought at least that one was queued up for a hearing. But that one was postponed until, but the two remaining ones, which were about the ability to have a finding that addresses buffer zones and whether the planning board itself would be the source of the special, would be the special permit granting authority, both of those got postponed until September 14th. However, then they both got postponed until October. And I did email the city planner to understand why they were postponed until October.
She's here.
So.
Sorry, Michelle.
Perhaps you can speak more fitfully for that, because we didn't get any communication about why. Came to understand there was, you know, something urgent that needed to happen at the planning board in September, but I don't understand why we couldn't have done those other two things at the September meeting.
You can come. Yep, Council, excuse me, Michelle Romero.
Sorry about that. I was watching you upstairs. You went really quickly all of a sudden. Michelle Romero, city planner. So the question is about the Papers 286 and Papers 315 of 2022?
I assume those are the numbers.
Yes. Okay, so you're not talking about the recommendations that?
We're talking about the ones that we have, the planning board has not discussed yet.
Okay, so those two are scheduled for hearing on October 12th, 2022. One of the papers, which was Paper 286 of 2022, was scheduled for hearing at the August 16th joint public hearing of the Planning Board and City Ordinance Committee at the request of the two sponsors that was tabled. And the other paper, which was Paper 315 of 2022, although it had been referenced in the notice of public hearing for the August 16th, 2022 joint public hearing, was not properly before the Planning Board and Ordinance Committee for public hearing because of the reconsideration motion and that whole process that had happened. So that was not properly before the group for public hearing. So that too is.
Excuse me, Council O'Malley, do you want your mic on? Because all I hear is you talking. So if you want it, okay, so why don't you make your comments public? Because it's distracting for me to hear the chatter.
It's surprising to hear you say that something's distracting. I was saying that it's questionable whether or not it was not properly before your body. I'm personally very disappointed in it that the chairman, the secretary, or the clerk, and the staff are allowing this to happen. Why wasn't it heard, one, in August, and two, in September?
We had received an opinion from the city solicitor, both the most recent former city solicitor, Catherine Fallon, as well as the current city solicitor, or at the time Acting City Solicitor John McNaut, that that was not properly before us. It had not been transmitted by the city clerk, because it could not be transmitted, because it was a subject of reconsideration. So that was never transmitted to us for public hearing. The vote to refer for public hearing, there was a reconsideration motion made, and that took it out of that particular process. So I thought that, I will say that I referenced it in the ad thinking that if the council...
No, sorry. I don't, I don't think that's true.
I think it's actually true.
No, I disagree fundamentally with your facts. I disagree fundamentally with the illegal analysis. It seems to be very politically motivated. Wasn't looking to have this conversation. Why wasn't it heard in September?
Okay, so if I could finish, so it was not, was not properly before that group on August 16th.
September, September.
Right. I had, if I wanted to finish my statement, I had put it in the ad thinking that possibly in the notice of hearing, the council might convene quickly, take it up, and still be able to refer it in time to make the August 16th hearing, but you did not convene. So you did not take up the reconsideration motion in time.
We did.
For that.
We did.
No, you didn't. You took it up the week before the hearing, so we couldn't give notice in accordance with statute.
Notice in the newspaper?
And to a butters. There was no proper notice that could be given in accordance with statute.
But it was posted on your agenda.
I'm sorry?
It was, yeah.
It was listed on the agenda with the specific caveat, this is contingent on the date of action and the result of your action.
I mean, I think we're.
That was my initiative, because I was hoping it could be done, but it could not be done.
I appreciate that. I think we're splitting hairs. In my opinion, appears like this is very politically coordinated between certain councilors, staff, maybe the legal department. Not unusual, this is par for the course. Why wasn't it held in September?
I will speak to that. I do want to address that, though. I do take some, I've been here over 20 years, and I've worked with many councilors, many mayors, many different city officials and staff. I'm not politically motivated. I live in the city. I'm not politically motivated. I will note that I have seen proposals made that are politically motivated, definitely politically motivated. For example, zoning amendments. They're often politically motivated, why they're even proposed. So I will state that for the record. It was not taken up at the September meeting. Another petition, which was tabled in July, intentatively scheduled for September, because it could not be taken up in August, because we had reserved the August meeting for the joint public hearing of the city council and planning board. Many of you were there, and you know that meeting ended at almost 10 o'clock. Hearing adjourned, I believe, at 9:45. So, you know, we're not in the habit, although in the past, we had previously begun hearings very late at night. It's not fair to the petitioners, it's not fair to the board members, it's not fair to the city councilors to begin public hearings at 10 o'clock at night. So that's why it wasn't scheduled for August, that particular matter. That was scheduled for September. We did ask if that could be moved. The petitioner had exigent circumstances and could not agree to move. So it needed to be taken up. Typically, when we table something, the general rule is that has to be taken off the table within a reasonable timeframe. That petition had already been waiting two months, so it was taken up in September. The joint public hearing was not scheduled for the same night. We have not, not been doing that. That's not our best practice, to schedule the joint public hearings and petitions for special permits the same night, especially where we expect a lot of testimony from public officials, citizens, et cetera. And we did expect both of those public hearings to be lengthy, both the joint public hearing and the petition and the special permit.
Michelle, I don't want to interrupt you. We do have Council Linehan waiting, so you want to?
I'm referring to Council McDonald. I'm not sure if he was down actually.
Whoever wants to speak. I know there's some questions, so I don't want, if the.
I, yeah, I will just say, you know, I understand that, and I understand the need to make sure that the petitioner who got postponed from July had a chance to have that hearing. It also, we're balancing a lot of calendar issues here, and it would be very helpful in the future if, you know, the planning board needs to look at changing a date that we'd already had to change because of this issue with whether the, you know, tabling the other thing, to have a way for us to all be in better communication about that in time for more of a discussion to happen. And I would also just note that one of the things that delayed me as a counselor in being able to participate in the meeting was that I received your recommendation about whether to approve or disapprove the council's proposal about an hour or two before the meeting. And I'd like to request that when things are on the planning board agenda coming from the council, if we could get your, if you're going to issue a recommendation about things that come from the council table, if we can get that a couple days in advance, that would really help to be able to review things and I think make better use of our time together.
So you're saying you didn't receive it till an hour before?
That's correct.
Okay, because it was sent before that.
When was it sent?
I'd have to look it up in the email. I don't send it to the whole committee, so it gets typically sent to the chair, to the sponsor, and/or to the city clerk. I would have to look that up. I do not believe it was sent an hour in advance. I'll have to look that up. I don't have the computer with me, but I will note, you want it two days in advance?
I mean, we try to get things that are on this council agenda five days in advance, so if it's possible to get it five days in advance, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't, I can't commit to five days in advance, but I'll have to look back. But typically, I believe I have been sending them 48 hours in advance for petitions as well as amendments and things like that. But I'll double check. I will particularly check on these particular recommendations. I'm not sure, and I will note that, two days in advance. Thank you.
Again, five days in advance would be, I think, more helpful for us to be able to follow up on those things, but certainly as far in advance as possible is helpful. I'm done.
Thank you, Council. Council Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to beat a dead horse either, but I would reiterate a lot of what Councilor McDonald said, just the courtesy of communicating when things are delayed or not going to be taken up. Council Crowe and I have worked really hard to shepherd these things through committee, and I'm in support of actually trying to vote things on the floor tonight that we do have consensus on. I think fundamentally, the things that we need to go back and workshop a little bit will actually end up on the same timeframe as the things that have been postponed will come back to us as a package, which was kind of the original intent, that these things are looked at holistically. So just for the benefit of my colleagues, since this is something that I've worked really hard on, I don't, I wish this got done a lot faster, of course, that would be the ideal world, but I think to actually be looked at together is also important. And we have a lot of different councilors who have amendments and, you know, additions and edits here that we should look at all at the same time. But I think the process has been a little frustrating to not understand why, you know, I was at that meeting until 10:00 PM. We had family in town. I know it's summer, it's tough, you know, those of us that were there, I heard that it was tabled till September. I reserved that time in September. It's frustrating to not understand why stuff. I'm hearing you loud and clear that there was a good reason, and that sometimes that happens, and I agree, it's probably not a best practice to start another hearing so late, and may actually not be within our rules. But just to even have understood that and be told as someone who's been sponsoring and trying to get this legislation through, I would like to know with a little bit more heads up, rather than just seeing it not on the agenda when the agenda goes out to the public. So if there's a way that we can work on that, I know I would appreciate it, and I'm hearing from colleagues that they would feel the same.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I shut you off? There you go, Ms. Romero.
Yeah, I did actually have this discussion with the chair, Chairman Iovin, and when the matters were tabled, they were tabled. There was no date specified. Later on in the evening, September was referenced, if possible. So the votes that were taken said the hearing will be tabled. There was no date actually set. I think September did come up later on in the evening, when it was questioned, when will these be heard? But, and I repeated and listened to the first hour of that hearing, and September was not mentioned. So I think it was suggested, and I think we stated we would try to do September. In terms of you not knowing that it wasn't going to be September, I'll have to figure out how I could do that, give you advance notice of what's going to be on the agenda, or what might not be on the agenda. But I will think about that, and I will talk to the chair about that as well, to see, we do want communication, you know, lines to be open, et cetera. And if, you know, I don't communicate with all of you, I am communicating directly with the city clerk, and typically the chair of ordinance. So I will look back at my records, because I'm pretty sure I was communicating with both of them in terms of the dates and what we were looking at. But thank you for your suggestions or requests.
Yeah, you have the mics though. Yep. Oh, did I shut you off? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Michelle. And I just had one point of clarification. So the timeline where we have to take things up is really on our end to refer and then have the public hearing within a certain timeframe? Is that, is that correct? Because I can't remember what that.
Yes, you, you, once the paper is filed with the council, the city council has 14 days to refer it for public hearing, to refer it to planning board to hold the joint public hearing with ordinance committee. Then, once it's referred, we have 65 days from the date it was received to begin the public hearing. So the October 12th, and I think I said the 14th, I'm sorry, I said 12th. The date is October 14th, Wednesday, October 14th. That fully complies with the statute.
And they're all considered to be under one umbrella in terms of, they all get referred at the same time, so the hearing?
They weren't all referred at the same time. 286 was referred back in June.
Right, okay.
It opened in August, late June. It opened in August, was tabled. The tabling just has to be to a reasonable date, as I said before. The Paper 315 was not. The Paper 315 was not referred and transmitted until you took the vote. Let me just get that date. When you reconvened, which was in August...
Clerk has whispered August 9th. I don't know if that's...
August 9th. So I think, I believe I received it on the 11th. So that 11th is when the 65 days began.
Okay.
August 11th. So we are full within the 65 days on the October. We will comply with all statutory notice requirements.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And open the hearing on that date.
The other thing I'm thinking, realizing as you're talking, too, is like, a frustration that I had was when, you know, the reconsideration, I understand, was fully done properly. The conversation I had with the clerk at the time was, do we need to then convene the council so as not to jeopardize the timeline for these papers? And the answer was no, it wouldn't change that timeline, but I'm hearing the opposite now. And so I don't want to rehash what's already been done, but I think for the future, we need to all have a better understanding. If we're going to allow reconsiderations at the end of the year, right, then what does that necessitate in order not to hold up Planning Board business if that's what's being affected? I think it's something we can talk about probably in ordinance when we talk about our rules, but that seems to be something that we don't have all the same understanding around. And if I thought that this was going to hold things up to this point, I probably would have pushed harder to have a meeting convened. At the time, it seemed like it wouldn't change things, but now we're really pretty far along, and it seems to have pretty clearly changed things. So just something that maybe Counselor Crowe and I, when we take that up in ordinance, we can talk about how to clarify that.
Counsel O'Malley, if you're going to continue to speak... No, I don't want you, you're being rude. You're being rude, Counselor. Counsel Seika.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that the four communications with the papers that are coming out of the Planning Board have nothing to do with Paper 315 or 286. There's no reason why we can't vote to either refer or whatever Counselor Crowe is willing to do with these four papers, communications, this evening. And I'd like to go on record also and state that I'm pretty sure the Planning Board doesn't necessarily answer to us. So I think when you send your decisions to us, it's an ample time for me to be able to read them, to know what's going to happen at that upcoming meeting. And also, I just want to go on record to state that the only thing that is politically motivated up here, Counselor O'Malley, is a few of these colleagues that are trying to push zoning changes for an applicant that has been denied from our Board of Appeal, who is currently in litigation with the city. So you want to talk about Counseless Spatafor and I being politically motivated to stop this paper? I did no such thing. During my time off this summer, I did not think about you once, okay? It has nothing to do with being politically motivated, these papers. It will come when it comes. I had every right to reconsider my vote, every right, okay? Really.
Okay, let's keep it...
Counselor O'Malley, the only thing politically motivated is you and a few other colleagues that are trying to get an applicant a license up here by changing ordinances and zoning amendments. That's the political motivation of this paper.
All right, I'm going to jump in here. Let's have a little decorum, please, please. Those are going to be an easy meeting, those are never the easy. Anybody else for the, Michelle, Counsel, Michelle Romero? Counsel Crowe.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Okay. Michelle, before you go, when I take up that motion, on behalf of a counselor who's lived here in this entire city...
Yes.
You have flaws, like everybody. Political motivation is not one of them. In fact, anybody who sat at a Planning Board meeting, you play both sides very well and always fighting for the community of the city. So I apologize as a council president on that comment, and I find it revolting. Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say my piece. Michelle, I have worked with you for a long time, when I was a freshman counselor back in 1998. And I think you just actually came on around that time. And we worked on some great projects down in my district. And I just want to say that you've always been professional, and there have been times where I have actually didn't like your rulings or your decisions. I'll be quite honest with you, you know? But you stuck to your guns, and you do what you believe is right for the city, and that's what you have been. And to have your character judged up here during this council is just not right. And, you know, I think people should know that. And I've worked with you for a long time. And I, you know, I know there's some issues going on up here. It's crazy sometimes up here. But I just want to say, you know, you shouldn't have to be standing there like you're in an inquisition for doing your job. And I want to thank you for doing your job.
Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. I just want to say also, Ms. Romero, that tonight, I don't think you should have been put through that. But I also do want to say to anyone who doesn't really know you and hasn't sat in many Planning Board meetings, and it's not that you didn't agree, Counsel Simonelli, necessarily with her decision. It's, she's a rule follower, and that's what she does. She doesn't put her own personal bias into these decisions. She looks at our ordinances, and she looks at our zoning, and she makes recommendations and works with the Planning Board to enforce the rules that we, as a City Council, have put on the books. And sometimes, I'm sure, she wishes it was different. But she does what needs to be done to make sure that we follow the rules as we should. So I thank you for that, and I thank you for continuing to do that.
Thank you.
Hold on. Counsel O'Malley.
I think that my comments are being mischaracterized up here. I specifically said I'm very disappointed in the chairman, or the supposed chairman of the Planning Board, and the supposed clerk of the Planning Board, as well as the staff. I think that there is clearly a group of counselors up here, maybe, maybe six, I don't know, who have, the staff clearly knows that they have the votes there, and it is very politically motivated. For years...
All right, Counsel, you know what? You know what? You want to spew hate and just false lies, it's getting old. Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of information to Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, are you saying I'm a rule breaker?
All right, let's go.
No, no, obviously, listen, I just, I got you.
Yes, you are, Counsel.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Okay, so now, Counselor Crowe, you have a motion to, and I think you seconded Counsel Condon first. So Counselor Crowe, you have a motion to move to ordinance, seconded by Counselor Crowe, excuse me, seconded by Counsel Condon. All those in favor? All those opposed? This is referring to ordinance, Counsel. Roll call.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linnahan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seika.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Spatafor.
Spatafor, yes.
All items referred to ordinance. Next order of business. Michelle, thank you. Well, you might be needed, so don't go too far.
Was it 316 you were for?
No, it's 380.
No, that was...
316. 316.
Yep.
Committee Report 385-22, Communication, Planning Board Recommendation Regarding Council Paper 317-22, which ordered MCC 12.12.190 H to be amended.
On Counsel Crowe's motion to receive the communication on file, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel Crowe for the paper. I'm sorry, Counsel, I don't know why I'm hitting the button.
Thank you. These next three are really administrative in nature, so I agree with Counsel Seika, they really have nothing to do with the other papers that are coming up, all of these. But so this first one is really about the security plan requirements, and so it takes, it just makes the security plan squarely with the police chief. Right now, it's part of the bigger package that goes to the cluck, and so some of the administrative is, it's kind of redundant, so just having it sit squarely with the police chief, so. And that was, the recommendation was to approve that change, and so on, motion to approve.
So Counsel, you're looking to accept the committee report and approve as reported out?
As reported out.
Correct? Right, so we're going to make a, you're going to make a motion to enroll?
Motion to enroll.
Okay, any que, okay, hold on, we have questions. Counsel O'Malley for the question. Counsel O'Malley.
I just want to appeal to the counselors of, to the counselors who are actually looking to improve the situation in our community, to, we've seen, we've seen the way that the behavior of our colleagues is...
Counsel, is this about through a moment, Counsel?
Let me speak, let me speak.
No, because...
Yes, it is. It's about whether or not I support that. Please let me speak and stop turning my mic off. We really have, we've seen how they behave when we trust them. We've seen what happens when they asked Counsel Linnahan to put the papers until the last meeting. We saw that they strategically reconsidered the papers that they wanted to not see happen over the summer. You cannot trust these people when it comes to doing the right thing. I do not think it makes sense to take these up separately. We lose all leverage to actually get improvement. Really, I ask you...
There's a motion to enroll, Counselor. It's a yes or no.
I'm speaking on that motion, and I think it is a mistake to enroll this. I think that we need to have the hearing. I think the Planning Board needs to do its job, which it has not been doing, and we need to take a look at this holistically. It's not, you cannot trust people who continuously put their hands behind their back and cross their fingers and then stab you in the back.
Absolutely right, Counsel O'Malley. Well said. Counsel Seika.
I just wanted to take a...
All right, let's keep the, okay, this is what I'm going to ask this Counsel, okay, because it's getting very frustrating. I want to keep the banter to a minimum here, please, so Counsel Seika. I'm setting the record straight. We have to operate in a way that is, you know, good not only for this body, but certainly the community, and I think it's getting a little out of control in a big way. So Counsel Seika.
Can we vote?
There's a couple of the lights, so I don't want to, I, there's a couple of the lights, Counsel Karen McDonald has the light on, so I don't want to stifle debate if it's useful and it's not. So Counsel McDonald.
I was just going to say, I think we had a good discussion about this at the Planning Board, and it was, you know, there wasn't any concern or objection. My recommendation would be that we go ahead and enroll the two, the three items that made sense, but we don't ordain until we have the whole package together. So we can just avoid future delays and future meetings, get it through that hurdle, but we still, that'll still, you know, we'll look at the final package before we decide whether we're going to, you know, say yes to the whole thing, because we've been trying to understand these things in relationship to each other, and it, because indeed, one of the concerns that showed up at the Planning Board was about how these things interact. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, that's a good recommendation. So the only thing I'm going to ask, Counsel Crowe, you're the Chair of Ordinance, can you just go through the other two papers for the benefit of...
Yes.
Myself, Counsel Condon as well, and maybe those who weren't part of that discussion.
So we just talked about the security plan requirements...
Yep, the security, yep, so that's Paper 386...
317. 385-22.
What was that one? 385-22.
Right.
Okay, we have that. Next one.
386-22 is the building and occupancy requirement, so it's kind of, right now, at the state, our ordinance required that they have, and...
Hundred percent.
That we do not give them the, yeah, the building, the occupancy permit. However, the CCC asks them if the city has given their permit, and so they get a call all the time, Mr. Miller does, so this just gives them the building permit so they can actually do the work, but has the occupancy permit sort of after they get all the other requirements.
So that's 386-22?
386-22.
Okay.
387-22 is just really bringing the language of the special permitting authorities, so we, it all has the same language, so when they're doing the special, we do this anyway, it just codifies all the languages in all the other areas that...
So they're not separate, right?
So they're not, so they have the same language in all the other areas that are getting a special permit.
Okay. Does everybody get that? So the, so I think Counsel Karen McDonald has a motion to...
So we want to enroll, and then we...
We want to enroll, and we do not want to ordain.
Then we will hold off the ordaining.
We did, we did 386-22.
Well, I've talked about it, but you can read it.
Yeah, we can redo it, okay.
That's the occupancy permit.
Do you want to read it, Clerk? Okay, so...
We have to do 385-22, motion to enroll.
Okay, so on Counsel Seika's motion to do Paper 385-22, seconded by Counsel Condon, motion to enroll, Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
I didn't realize we were moving into that. I thought we were voting on...
I put you late on Counsel.
Okay, that's all right. I thought we were, you just caught me off guard, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's...
I thought we were voting on Counselor Crowe's. Okay, so right now, we're...
I think you just said the wrong name.
I did?
Counsel Kerry.
Yeah, okay. So I think we're going to... Oh, it's on, sorry, sorry.
So I think the plan is, and I don't want to speak to the Counsel, that we are going to vote on these...
Sorry.
Do you want to say anything? No, I don't need to...
I just want to make sure my man is okay. Yes, that's...
Hold on, Counsel, let me put the mic on. I just, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, these are sort of in different chunks in my mind. There are some very substantive, sticky things that we have to, that we've, I think is right to send back to talk more about. The rest of these are really streamlining, really have come from the cluck to us, that are things that clean up our zoning, our ordinances, in a way that benefits more than just what we started talking about. They're very, we had a good discussion at Planning Board at the public hearing. I think we have very low controversy on these other pieces, in my opinion. I think we can get these out of the way, and then we for sure have a lot of deep conversations still to have on the other stuff. So two different chunks of type of ordinance in my mind.
All right, so we have 385-22, there's a motion to enroll. Counsel Crowe's done that, seconded by Counsel Condon. Clerk will call the roll, and that's what you, yes to enroll, no not to roll. Thank you.
Cologne Hayes.
She said yes.
Yes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linnahan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
No.
Seika.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Spatafor.
Spatafor, yes.
Is there another motion?
On Paper 386-22, motion to enroll.
Okay, on Counsel Crowe's motion for Paper 386-22, motion to enroll, seconded by...
Seika.
Counsel Seika. Clerk will call the roll.
Building and occupancy requirements.
And this is going, is this going back to planning?
No.
No. All right.
Cologne Hayes.
So the other ones.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
No.
No. All right.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
No.
Seeca.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes.
Carrie's standing one.
Before we move on to the next one, not that, this is just more administrative as well, but since we have the city planner up here, I just want to give her an opportunity to...
About Paper 387-22? Is that what you...
Or whatever she, she needed to, because...
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'm questioning the papers, the numbers of the papers. We did hearing, I understood we were talking about Paper 317, 318, and 319.
Yes.
But these, have they been assigned different numbers, or...
Yes, when they get back, back on the, the docket, they have a new sort of paper number, but they are...
But those are the communication numbers. The actual ordinance is still paper, I just want it clear so that you're, you know, the record reflects you, you voted to amend the ordinance in accordance with the, the right paper numbers. And I, I believe we did the hearings on 317, 18, and 19.
318 and 19, right.
Yeah, the communication got numbers to them that you sent us, but the papers are 316, 317, 318, and 319.
Okay. All right. I was just hearing different numbers of the voting. Sorry, I was confused.
Yeah, so they, they are references, attachments to the clerk and for everybody watching, so it says, it says 317, 20, 22, Planning Board Recommendation-822, and it goes 18, 19, same thing, 22 with the recommendations referencing...
Okay, but you're, so you're voting on the, the zoning amendments?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So they, they will, they will tick and tie together to make sure that they work with the recommendations that the planning board recommended along with the, the city council papers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, no, it's a good, good check.
That was all. I didn't want to add anything else. Thanks.
Too many numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Crowe?
It's on...
Your motion to enroll?
We just, we did that, didn't we?
No, we did the last one, right?
Now we're doing the last one, on...
Communication, which is streamlined.
Communication 387-22, with city council paper 319 of 22. And again, this just ties the, the same language in, to all the other areas of special permit.
Okay.
So motion to enroll.
Any discussion? Seeing none in hearing none? Do you need a second on that?
Second.
Counselor Murphy. On Counselor Crowe's motion to enroll, seconded by Counsel Murphy, clerk will call the roll for Paper 387-22, referencing 319-22, Public Planning Board Recommendation-8-22, so we have for the record, too.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
No.
Seeca.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
So, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes.
Carrie's standing one.
Okay. Next order of business?
Docket is clear.
The docket is clear. Personal privilege, Counsel Simonelli hit the light first. There you go, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give a, a little point of information. I know last council meeting, we announced that Jim Cahill, the director for the Forest Dale Cemetery, has put his papers in to retire, and I think some folks thought that he had already retired and packed his bags up and left to Hawaii. But I had spoken to him on several occasions, I speak to him often, and he had said to me that he wanted everyone to know that he is there, and he intends to be there during the time of the transition with the, whoever it is that's coming in next. But he is there, so, you know, if any, anybody out there wants to have any, has any questions about, you know, lots of cemetery, or where loved ones may be, you can knock on that door and you'll get the old funny Jim Cahill answering the door. So I just wanted to give that as a point of information.
He's very sensitive about my man.
He, yes, he, he is, he is Mr. President. He, he's like, I didn't just leave, but anyway, you know, he's a good guy. Jim Cahill's a great guy. I've known him for a long time. You know, he helps out everybody, you know, he rises to the occasion. I know a lot of families, when they were in bad times and have lost loved ones, he has comforted them and, and made things easy for their transition. So, you know, he'll be, he'll be sorely missed over at the Forest Dale Cemetery. And, you know, look, I, I got to say it, too, you know, he's done some great work at the Forest Dale Cemetery with the monuments that, that he's put up there, the beautification. So he's put his heart and soul into working there, and it's, and it's not easy. It's not e...
Is he writing this for you?
No, no, no.
Okay, just want to make sure.
No, no, Mr. President. I'm just, I'm friends with Jim Cahill, I always have been, and, and honestly, I, I thought he retired and was gone, too. I mean, I, you know, that's, that's, that's the information that we received as a council. But that's, that's not the case. He is retiring, but he's actually there, still working. So I just wanted people to know in case they have to go there. But, you know, like I was saying, Jim Cahill's always been a very helpful guy. He's helped me out on many occasions when I've had people that have lost loved ones and really didn't know where to turn, and, you know, he's helped them out. So I just want to just recognize that, Mr. President, and I thank you all for your cooperation.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes. Karen Cologne Hayes.
Sorry. Okay. Oh, thank you. So I was a little hesitant. I did say that I was going to give, invite you to some events, but I hear that some of these might be changing, so that's why the youth did not invite you. But I do know of a couple here, that there was a Saturday, so Hispanic Heritage Month this year, there was a, a decision, we doing things a little bit differently, in the North Shore Hispanic Association, working with BBOs and the mayor's office, and, and Elena Martinez for the Language Access Coordinator, and myself, were trying to plan a month-long of events this, this year instead of one big. The North Shore Hispanic Association usually does a big festival. That's something new. I wasn't as involved with all the planning, but we did open it up on Thursday, September 15th, and it was really fun here at City Council Plaza. A great band, Juan Lopez came, and he's been involved with us for years. I think the North Shore Hispanic Association, we've been around for five years. So I'm going to read these off. I will email you if I hear they change. So, and anybody listening, I will post them on my page if they change.